Welcome, everyone. This is the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Regular Meeting at City Hall, May 18th, 2021, at 4:30 PM. I am very honored and have the opportunity to recognize who's given our invocation tonight is my pastor from First Baptist, Bowling Green, and he has his daughter Reagan with him, and we have Dr. Jeff Reynolds. Sir?
Thank you, sir.
Let's pray. Mother, we love you, and we thank you for this day. For, Lord, we know this is the day that you have made, and we rejoice, and we are glad in it. We are thankful for our city, and we are so thankful, Lord, for all those who labor diligently to make this the great city that it is. We thank you for those who serve, who self-sacrifically serve so that we might benefit as we seek to live the lives you've given us to live here in Bowling Green, Kentucky. And so, Lord, as we open this session of the City Commission, we pray that you would be pleased with everything that happens here. We thank you for all who lead. We thank you for all who serve. We pray that you would bless them and their household. We ask that you would continue to bless our city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. Thank you, Reagan. It's good to see you all tonight. Lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Please be seated. Mrs. Jackson, would you go ahead? By roll call, please.
Mr. Beasley Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Paragon?
Here.
Commissioner Bailey?
Here.
Mayor Alcott?
Here.
Welcome, everybody. We have a few announcements. Just wanted to say, first of all, we have a couple of national weeks to recognize. One, this is the National Week of the Police Officers, and if you haven't had an opportunity to say thank you to our police force, they do an amazing job of taking care of our city on a 24-hour basis. And we pass some kudos on through our City Commissioner this week, but it's just an honor to recognize our police officers. Also, this is the Public Works Recognition Week, and so our city is operated and run 24/7 by taking care of our streets, by taking care of our parks, by taking care of our fleet, by taking care of our operations. It doesn't seem, it really actually wasn't that long ago, we had snow, and they were the ones out there taking care of our streets 24/7 for over 48 hours, nonstop. And then, I think that was bookmarked by a flood to begin it and a flood to end it. And so, incredible amount of teamwork and how well they take care of our city and parks, and just want to say kudos to both them. I know Mrs. Paragon has, or Commissioner Paragon, has some words that she's going to share, but before that, I'd like to recognize our City Manager, Mr. Jeff Meisel. One of three in the state of Kentucky, he has received his International City Manager Certification through the International City Managers Association. And he did this on his time and did a lot of extra work and due diligence, and so he's been continuous to push himself to be the best City Manager that we could have, and I believe that we have the best City Manager in the City of Bowling Green and the state of Kentucky. So, well done, Jeff. All right, Commissioner Paragon.
Thank you. I agree with everything you said. And so, I wanted to say a little something about National Law Enforcement Week, National Police Week. I read, according to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund, that we lost 295 American Law Enforcement Officers in the year 2020. So, I personally want to say a special thank you to the City of Bowling Green Police Department, the Warren County Sheriff's Department, the WKU Police Department, the Drug Task Force. I wrote this down because I don't want to leave anybody out. Everybody for contributing to our wonderful public safety. Also, the entire justice system, we've got some attorneys in here that contribute to the well-being of our communities. And so, the entire justice system, along with and lockstep with our policing agencies, really make this a fantastic community. And I'm going to indulge because I have a really good friend, as some of you officers out there will remember, Officer Billy Stark. Do you all remember Billy? What a wonderful man. He died a few years back, and his daughter is a good friend of mine, and Billy didn't ever strike me as being a poem kind of a guy, at all. I mean, I wouldn't have thought Billy Stark would have kept a poem, but he did. And when she was going through his things, she found this poem, and I'm going to indulge you all and read that, and I'll go fast because we don't want to take up any more time we have to, but I thought this was really good for National Police Officers Week. "Just Reward" is the name of the poem. "The police officer stood and faced his maker, which must always come to pass. He hoped his shoes were shiny, just as brightly as his brass. Step forward now, police officer, how shall I deal with you? Have you always turned the other cheek to your maker? Have you been true?" To the police officer with square shoulders said, "No, sir, I guess I ain't," because those of us who carry badges can't always be a saint. "I had to work most Sundays, and at times my talk was rough. At times I've been violent because the streets are tough. But I never took a penny that wasn't mine to keep, though I worked a lot of overtime when the bills just got too steep. I never passed by a cry for help, though at times I shook with fear. And sometimes, please forgive me, I've wept many tears. I know I don't deserve a place among the people here. They never wanted me around except to calm their fears, but if you have a place for me here, well, it need not be too grand. I never expected or had too much, so if you don't, I'll understand. There was silence all around the room where the saints respectively stood, and the police officer waited quietly for the judgment, bad or good. Step forward now, police officer, you've borne your burdens well. Come walk a beat on heaven's streets, for you've done your time." Thank you. Anybody wants a copy of that, I can get it to them. Thank you all very much. In memory of Billy Stark.
Thank you, Commissioner Paragon, and I think Commissioner Carlos Bailey.
I just want to tell, I guess, everyone that protects and serves, that I appreciate, deeply appreciate everything that you guys are doing. I come from a family that had law enforcement background. One of the second African-American that served in the Bowling Green Police Department was my uncle. The first was, you know, Commissioner Denny, who succeeded. So, I appreciate everything you guys do because I understand, I'm also an attorney for any of you guys that don't know, so I understand how that life can be hard, and sometimes you take it home, and a lot of people don't see that. So, just to be a peace officer, which it comes from, I appreciate everyone that is protecting and serving our city. I have a lot of friends who are at the Justice Center who are sheriffs, and I have some friends who are also Bowling Green Police Officers. So, hats off to each and every one of you guys, because without you, chaos will rule. So, I appreciate everyone that is protecting and serving in Bowling Green, Kentucky.
Right. Thank you very much. Mr. Meisel. Floor's yours.
I have no comments, Mayor.
All right. Our first item-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Apologize. There will be a need for a closed session. I'd like for Ashley to read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 61-8101G, discussions between a public agency and a representative of a business entity, and discussions concerning a specific proposal as open discussions would jeopardize the citing, retention, expansion, or upgrading of the business.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Paragon. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. All right. Our first item of business is approval of minutes for the regular meeting, May 4th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-68.
Municipal Order approving the promotions of Andy Embry, Scotty Sheehan, and Jeff Woosley to the position of Captain, and Brian Fulton, Brandon Gillum, William Ross Graves, Shawn Hamilton, Mario Iberay, and Billy Minehart to the position of Engineer in the Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Meisel.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, we are just right around the corner from opening up our seventh fire station, the Lovers Lane Station Number Seven. With that, we'll have the need of three more captains and three more engineers, and with those three more captains, we need three more engineers on top of that to fill the captains that are moving up to those positions. So, tonight, we have nine promotions in total, and I'd like to introduce our new interim Fire Chief, Mr. Jim Morrow. Chief Morrow, would you come up and present your recommendations for promotion?
Go ahead. And Commissioners, I'd just like to start off by saying thank you to all of you. Your foresight in approving stations and personnel allows the Fire Department to keep pace with the growth of the city, and I think it demonstrates your commitment to the safety of the citizens of Bowling Green, and I apologize for that. Thank you. With growth creates opportunity, and the opening of Station Seven at Lovers Lane Soccer Complex will create a unique opportunity for multiple promotions within the Fire Department. It's my pleasure to come before you this evening, present recommendations for promotions of nine members of the Fire Department. The opening of the new fire station creates a need for three additional captain positions. All three of the engineers I'm recommending for promotion to captain have obtained numerous certifications and credentials to validate that they possess the knowledge and skills needed to advance to the captain's rank. They've all attended the BGFD Officer Training School and completed the Fire Officer One Certification. So, I'd ask Scotty Sheehan to please stand up. Scotty's been with the department since 2011. He's been actively involved in our technical rescue program. He served on both apparatus committee and employee committee. He will remain active in our tech rescue program as he begins his new assignment at Station Six on Truck Six, and he'll be instrumental in assisting with the transition as we bring our truck companies into the rescue program. Have Jeff Woosley stand up, please. Jeff's been with the department since 2006. He's been in charge of our small engine repair and service program for a number of years. Jeff has also served on our wards committee since 2011. Jeff will be assigned to Engine Four and will continue to be involved with the Hazmat Program, which he currently is involved in and has been instrumental in helping us revamp our Hazmat Program. Andy Embry? Andy's been with the department since 2012. He's a certified paramedic, and he instructs EMS classes for the department. He also served on the Station Seven Building Committee and contributed to plan and design of the new station that we hope to open any day now. Andy will be assigned to Engine Four, and he'll be involved in the Hazmat Program. So, those are my recommendations for promotion to captain. Thank you. Sit down, please. The opening of Station Seven also creates openings for promotion to three new engineers, as well as the City Manager said, three additional engineers to fill the vacancies created by the recommended promotions to captain. All six of these firefighters have attained the required certification and credentials to promote to engineer and have excelled in our written and practical testing to be eligible for promotion. Please stand and say your name. Mario has an illness in the family and was not able to make it tonight. Brian Fulton? Brian has been with the department since 2012. He will be assigned to Station Four, will also be involved with the Hazmat Program. With the sergeants, I'm going to condense a little bit, just for the sake of time, I could go on all night telling you about all the credentials that these men have. Shawn Hamilton? Shawn has been with the department since 2015. He'll be assigned to Station Six, and he'll be involved in the technical rescue program. Ross Graves? Ross has been with the department since 2006. He'll be assigned to Station Six and will be involved in the Hazmat Program. Brandon Gillum? Brandon's been with the department since 2009. He'll be assigned to Station One and will continue to be involved with the technical rescue program. Billy Minehart? Billy's been with the department since 2011. He'll be assigned to Engine Four and will be involved in the Hazmat Program. Thank you, guys. All the individuals I've introduced to you this evening have been solid performers throughout their careers, and I'm very confident in recommending them for promotion. Their advancement in this organization will not only benefit the Bowling Green Fire Department, but also the citizens of Bowling Green, whom they will serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Let's make this thing official. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yep.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations to you and your families. And we're going to have a three-hour meeting. Bailiff, please close the doors. No, I'm kidding. No, that was bad. Police officers. Hey, families, thank you so much for being here today and recognizing these amazing promotions as our city grows, as our community grows, and as we go towards the danger. Thank you very much. Congratulations to each and every one of you. Y'all can head on home, enjoy your celebrations.
That's two. That's one. It's two. One's our- Two. When I see those trucks, I think that's a million dollars. That's what that costs. It was a million dollars.
Hi, Mrs. Hamilton. All right. Municipal Order Number 2021-69.
Municipal Order approving the career path advancement of Matthew Johnson to the position of Fire Equipment Mechanic in the Public Works Department.
So moved. Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Meisel.
Mayor, I'd like to ask Greg Meredith, our Public Works Director, to come make this recommendation for our career path advancement.
Good afternoon. Today is my pleasure to be here to recommend the promotion of Matt Johnson from the position of Equipment Technician Master to Fire Equipment Mechanic in our Fleet Division of Public Works. In accordance with our Technician Certification Program, an Equipment Technician Master is eligible for promotion to Fire Equipment Mechanic if the employee has attained the additional ASC, the Automotive Service Excellent Certifications, and two additional EVTs, which Emergency Vehicle Technician Certifications, and both of those requirements are mandatory for that position. Matt has been employed with the City of Bowling Green since July 2007. Since that time, he's progressed to become one of the most knowledgeable and relied upon technicians in our Fleet Division. Matt has the ability to troubleshoot, diagnose, and repair most every piece of equipment in our diverse fleet. He's oftentimes called upon to engineer and to fabricate solutions to unique problems in order to get the equipment up and running again. His pleasant demeanor and good people skills enable him to communicate with his fellow employees in a clear and positive manner. Matt eagerly takes on challenges and has a desire to expand his knowledge and expertise. The fact is, that fact is evident based upon his accomplishment of obtaining his Fire Equipment Mechanic status. Unfortunately, Matt couldn't be with us here today, but we're very proud of him and thankful for the work he does in our Fleet Department. I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Meredith. No further questions. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-70.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of Lacey Harrod, Meredith Lopez, and Lauren Underwood to the position of Communications Dispatcher in the Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. Mr. Meisel.
Mayor, Commissioners, we have three vacancies in the dispatch division right now, and we think we have three really good fits here before us tonight, and I'd like to ask Aaron Holesy to come up, HR Director, to make recommendations.
Good afternoon. As Jeff Meisel said, we do have a couple of vacancies. We have not had to actually do a full recruitment cycle of this for about a year. We have been fairly stable in our dispatch department lately, so we did start this most recent recruitment cycle back in the fall. As you know, it takes quite a bit of time. We've received 29 applications, and this is a little bit lower than normal. I think that kind of comes with the time of what was happening in the fall, a lot of uncertainty, not a lot of movement with jobs. But as we go through, we had 14 show up for LSI, eight completed background, and we interviewed five applicants, and very happy with the three that we are recommending for approval today. With us tonight is Lacey Harrod, if you would like to stand, as well as Lauren Underwood. Meredith Lopez is moving from Virginia, so she wasn't able to be here tonight. There's a brief description and bio of all three in the memo that I've provided. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Congratulations.
It's a very critical job for our community. Congratulations to you. All right.
And likewise. I recognize one phase. So, you're leaving the courthouse. Yeah, I see. I understand.
All right. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-63.
Municipal Order authorizing adoption of the revised City of Bowling Green Fire Promotional Procedures.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Paragon. Mr. Meisel.
Mayor, this is an item that I requested that we pull recently, and we have done further work on it and tweaked a few more things and reviewed it with our Fire Department. Everything is a go, and I'd like to ask Aaron to come back up and kind of maybe give you a brief, a brief, brief, brief overview, summary of what's before you, and can answer any questions you might have.
So, right after we did the new promotional procedures last year, we were actually going through a process. We were updating some of the position titles. You'll see for a long time, in that F2 level, the title was Fire Apparatus Operator, and we've changed that to Engineer, and Company Commander to Captain, and the Assistant Chief of Suppression is now titled Battalion Chief. Because they are sworn and are hazardous pay with the retirement system, changing those titles actually did require quite a bit of a process, as well as some of the eligibility requirements that we've attached to those in order to promote into those positions. So, we've now been able to go through the promotional procedures, officially update all of those titles, all of those eligibility requirements. There are a couple of other small process changes. For example, this year will be included, applicants did not have to meet all of the eligibility requirements until the end of the process, which is about right before the promotion list stands, and so we kind of spend a lot of time chasing down those last-minute credentials throughout the promotional process. And so, starting next year, we have included that that will be, they need to be eligible during the application period, which would be pretty normal. A couple of other cleanups to some small process changes, but really nothing big otherwise besides that. Any questions? Clarification? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-71.
Municipal Order authorizing accepting bid number 2021-18 for fiscal year 2021 sidewalk construction from Infinity Pipeline Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $441,272.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Meisel.
We recently went out for bid for sidewalk construction. This is in our current year budget, FY21. We bid out four different areas. First section is Loving Way from the bypass to Rhodes Drive. Then, we're looking at Holly Drive from Catherine to Dennis, and then on Highland Way, we're looking at Small House Road over to Weston, and then on North Lee Drive from Trent Way to Old Bear and River Road. This project includes excavation, construction, ADA compliant ramps, any drive entrance construction with driveways, that sort of thing, crosswalks, the whole kabang, kaboom, whatever you want to call it. We're looking at 4,269 linear feet of sidewalk. We bid out this project, and we got two bids, one from Infinity Pipeline and one from Scott and Murphy. This was a low bid evaluation, and we are proposing to go with Infinity Pipeline in the amount of $441,272. We have a fixed completion date of October 1 on this, this fall, and this comes out of our sidewalk fund, and the money has been set aside and is already in this year's budget, ready to go. And Greg Meredith is here to answer any questions you might have on this.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Mr. Meredith, anytime a neighborhood gets new sidewalks is pretty exciting for families and kids, be able to ride their bikes and walk their dogs. So, would you sort of explain to the public, maybe the system in place that we had before, and then what you all implemented to make sure that we are prioritizing in a way that was fair, and we're making sure that we were building sidewalks where we most needed them?
Sure. Yeah. The prioritization process has been in place for many years, probably before I got here, probably 2006, I think, is when that started, when there was set aside funding, particularly for sidewalk. I think it started out, and it's pretty much remained, at about a half million dollars per year. So, the process includes, first of all, it could be requests from citizens for certain segments based upon, you know, a neighborhood, a connection, you know, traffic, any desire that they have to have that connection. We look at their input, their requests. We also look internally. City Commissioners, members of staff can recommend that a location, a segment, be connected, and these are mostly all segments between either an existing piece of sidewalk or a particular destination in a neighborhood. So, with that, the criteria are based upon the, what we call, we've got a computer GIS model, we call it non-latent transportation demand model. So, it takes into account where people live, you know, whether it's multifamily, single family, how many people live there, and then where they want to go. There's a destination part of that as well, which includes schools. We look at major shopping centers, grocery stores. That's kind of the demand portion. We also look at constructability. How easy is it to connect point A to point B? Are there enough funds to, you know, be able to equitably spread the need out and spread the sidewalks out? That's why generally, we have more than one location. We want to make sure we're touching different places. We look at the roads that are adjacent to where those sidewalks are. If it's a heavily traveled road, then they're less likely to feel comfortable walking in the street. If it's a neighborhood or a cul-de-sac that has very limited traffic, then that would be lower on the priority list for sidewalks. And we also look, again, on how many people have requested. So, it's a, or how many people that, you know, we've seen walking on those streets. How many reports do we get from the Police Department that folks need a sidewalk because they feel it's dangerous? So, we call that demonstrated need. That's got a few points that go into this evaluation. Total 100-point score, and we rescore those once a year. So, I hope that kind of helps explain the program in general.
Yes. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And if citizens wanted to, then after this, you know, presented how it works, wanted to share with us where they see some needs for sidewalks, how would they do that?
Sure. There's, you can go online, you can go to City Central and make that request. You can send emails, they can call us, and we'd be glad to come out and look at with them or take into, you know, account their specific requests. So, yeah.
Thank you so much. I know folks will be excited about the sidewalks we're building.
Mr. Meredith, I have a question. The sidewalks that we're building, is it going to take up any current street that we actually have right now, and will it make it smaller, and will it, I guess, cause any type of traffic problems?
It won't cause any traffic problem. No, there's one street in particular where a certain Commissioner lives that we're going to take up part of the street that's not being used right now. There's some white-edged land striping on Highland Way. We're going to take a little bit of that up in order not to have to impact properties as much. So, yeah, for the most part, it does not affect traffic adversely. We wouldn't do that. That would be part of our evaluation as well.
All right. Thank you.
Greg? No further questions. Roll call, please.
No further questions. Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-72.
Municipal Order authorizing the acceptance of a 2021 grant from the Kentucky 911 Services Board for 911 system radio and phone dispatch console equipment in the amount of $186,408.75.
Moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizeal? Yes, Mayor, thank you. It wasn't too long ago, we came to you wishing to apply for this grant, and we already have gotten notice that we will be getting this grant. So, we are coming to you tonight for your permission to accept it. It's $186,408.75 from Kentucky 911 Services Board. We received several good grants from this board, and we really appreciate that. And this would be used for the dispatch consoles down at the Dispatch Center 911 on Center, on, sorry, on Kentucky Street. We think we can buy two, two more stations for the dispatch down there with this money. They're not cheap, but they're very well, they're very much needed. And this would get us to a total of nine dispatch consoles and centers, working stations down at Police. So, ask for your support and go ahead and getting this money in and putting it to use. Chief Delaney is here, if you have any questions about this purchase for this project. And also, Nick is here for the, for the grant side. Thank you, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
I don't have any questions, but Nick, you're killing it. I think I told you before, just in the grants, just salute to you, sir.
Didn't you get it quicker? No, kidding. Well done. All right, roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-74.
73. Municipal Order authorizing the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, for the purchase of bulletproof vests for the Police Department in the amount of $18,700.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizeal? We would like to apply for more bulletproof vest money through the Bullet, Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program. And this is $18,700. It would be our 50% share. We buy them first, and they reimburse us for 50%. So, we're only, we're basically getting vests at half, half price. So, we think we can buy 44 vests with this money, and would like to get this money in as well, and, and like to apply for this. So, appreciate your support on this.
Is that the 20% supply that we usually buy every, every year?
I think we try to buy so many per year, yes. And 44 is about roughly, yeah.
20%?
Yeah. And Nick is here, and Chief Delaney is here in the back, answering any questions. But we've been doing this for how long, Nick? For 10, 15, 20 years? It's, it's a good, good revenue stream for buying bulletproof vests?
We have to have up-to-date equipment. We can't hold back on any equipment.
They have a five-year expiration, Chief? So, we, we have to change them out.
20% each year is what we buy, right?
All right, no further questions. Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-74.
Municipal Order authorizing the acceptance of a grant through the Kentucky Fire Commission Thermal Imaging Camera Grant Program in the amount of $3,200 for the Fire Department.
So moved. Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perrigen. Mr. Mizeal? This was another one we went after, and we are asking for your approval to accept this grant from Fire, Kentucky Fire Commission, to buy a thermal imaging unit. This is to allow firefighters to see through smoke, detect hotspots, can locate victims in fires, very useful equipment. We have one camera that's got quite a bit of age on it. We'd like to replace. These things are not cheap either, but we can get this pretty much half, half cost. It's a 50% grant, so we would pay for 50%, and then the grant would cover the rest. So, again, Nick is here to answer any questions. Questions? Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-75.
Municipal Order authorizing the request and acceptance of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds from the U.S. Department of the Treasury under the 2021 American Rescue Plan Act in the amount of $16,584,849.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. Mr. Mizeal? This is just to make, make it official, to request this money from what we call the ARPA money, the stimulus that was recently passed earlier this year. We've been told that we're getting roughly $16.5 million that would be distributed, I think, over two, two allotments, one half this year, and then half next year. Nick worked on this. This was a little tedious, I think, with getting signed up with the SAM. What does that stand for? The? Yeah, it was all automated, and a little more work to do. But Katie and Nick both worked on this, and requesting your approval to, to make a request for, for drawing out, start to draw out this money. So, a question I have. So, the two allotments that are coming to us, does it come through the state, or does it come directly to the city? Or how do we receive the funds? This is directly from the U.S. Department of Treasury. Since we are an entitled community with CDBG, we did not have to go through the state, like smaller communities. I think we're one of five or six in the state, eight, sorry, thank you, that are getting the direct appropriation from the Department of Treasury. I, I would just like to state that this is significant. I know, you know, there are some announcements that came preliminary through the state, to the governor, through some of our legislators. This is an opportunity for us to really look at what we need as a community. You know, we have community leaders that have led, you know, our community for many, many years, that brought I-65 here, that brought the Trans Park here, that brought our city government, you know. And this is our way to look to the future, what we can do, and not just be isolated as well. We need to look at what our county government is doing, because they're receiving similar funds, from what I understand. Our school systems are receiving similar funds. And we can look back at this one or two ways. One, this was a tax burden on us as a whole, that we have to continue to pay back to the U.S. Treasury, how these funds have been allocated. And I understand the government, once they're allocated, they will be spent. So, what will we do differently as a community that will continue our prosperity for the road ahead? And so, those are the challenges that we have as city commission, as a city, to decide. And I just put that challenge on the table as we think forward tonight. So, thank you for putting this forward, and we're very excited about receiving these funds and what we can do. All right, roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2021-21. This is our second reading, and this is binding. I don't think there's any necessary, this was a five and five, five and oh vote last time. If there's any further questions? All right.
I'll read real quick.
Sorry.
Ordinance approving amendment to amended and restated ground lease. An ordinance of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky authorizing an amended and restated ground lease with the Intermodal Transportation Authority, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perrigen. I know if further questions at this time, roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2021-22, second reading and is binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 15.7146 acres from AG Agriculture, RM3 Townhouse Multifamily Residential, and HB Highway Business to RM3 Townhouse Multifamily Residential, located at Zero Cherry Farm Lane, presently owned by Fallbush Properties LLC, with a Himalaya Kentucky Properties LLC as the applicant.
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner, oh, excuse me, moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill. This was also a five and oh vote. Unless there's any further questions at this time, roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes.
All right, we have a presentation this time from Mrs. Katie Schaller Ward. And Mr. Mizeal? So, good afternoon. We are coming to you today with our FY22 budget. One of my duties as city manager is to bring you a budget recommendation by June 1 of each year, under normal circumstances, in parentheses. Last year was nowhere near under normal circumstances, and we had to make other arrangements, but we are back under normal circumstances. And I am sitting here, standing here before you today on May 18, 2021, to present to you the FY22 budget with the assistance of my budget team. So, some of you may be panicking and thinking, we just got these two binders on Thursday, and here we are looking at budget. But this, I want to remind you, this is just a presentation. You have the next two weeks to digest all of this, this presentation, what's in your binders. And we'll, we'll look at June 1 and June 15 as the first and second readings for the budget. But if you're short on time, I would highly recommend that you read the budget message in your budget packets under the Budget Message tab. It gives you basically everything we're, we're planning on doing in the budget in those 16 pages. It's a really good summary. So, before I get going here, I want to introduce the budget team. Katie Schaller Ward, Assistant City Manager, CFO, does a lot of the lead work. She's basically the lead singer of the band, and, and has done a tremendous job in coordinating this budget under some tough circumstances. Along with her is Erin Holsey, our HR Director. Erin plays lead guitar in the band. Sort of she handles all the personnel. Next, we have Erin Ballou. She is our Assistant CFO. I would call, I would say Erin plays keyboard, because she's on the keyboard a lot, and puts a lot of this, what's in your package together, the, 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 all the graphics and charts and graphs, and expenditure side capital. Erin does a great job with that. And then last but not least, Mr. Sean Weeks, Assistant CFO. Sean handles our revenue projections, and will be presenting, will be first up here in just a few minutes. So, I want to thank all of these guys for their hard work. We had, they had some late nights and some weekends over the last couple of weeks, and, and worked really hard on this, to get this to you today. Also want to thank my department heads that are in the room today with us. They're here for, for support and backup, and answer any questions later that you might have. They work hard on this as well. It starts with them and their departments, and I'd like to thank them and their staffs, and along with Laura Harris in our, our City Manager Department for all the graphic designs you see in this book and, and this presentation. So, I'm going to spend a little more time than I usually do today, just to explain to you the budget process. I know, Mayor, you're, you're new to this. Commissioner Bailey, you're new to this. And Commissioner Hill, this is going to be a refresher for you. Commissioner Beasley Brown and Commissioner Perrigen have been around with this for a while, and, and kind of know the, the other side of things. But we go about this, how we put 122.7 million all funds budget, and a $75.6 million general fund budget together, starts with you. And it started with the BOC retreat in January, where you all came to us and told us what you wanted to see in the upcoming budget, some of your priorities and, and goals. We take that, and we, we, next we meet with the senior management team, and we formulate a management agreement, a management agenda on how we want to accomplish those goals and priorities. And we, we spend most of the day together putting that together. And so, your goals and priorities are shown on pages 17 through 20 in your budget books under the Strategic Planning Section. After that, we kick it off with budget, budget season with our city departments. We open up the New World Budget to them to start entering their department budgets. Each department head has to submit their budget by mid-March, and turn those budgets into us, the budget team. And then, we start meeting with them one-on-one to look over their proposed budgets. Excuse me. Not everyone gets what they want, but most don't walk away mad either. Most. But we handle that as, as we go. But at that point, the budget team starts beginning to fill up the jar. Have you all ever heard the analogy of the jar? You put the big rocks in first, and you know which ones are important. We try to put, put those in first, the jar, then you, then you go to the gravel, and you get to the sand, and you keep going until the jar is completely full. Last year, we had to use a smaller jar because of COVID, but we accomplished that. I'm glad, I'm, I'm sitting here, standing before you today, telling you that we accomplished our mission this current fiscal year. When we, we shrunk the budget last year, we, we, I, I feel like we really made the good calls, and we have come out in good shape. So, we were cautious and conservative with that budget, and I'm pleased to tell you today that we're in, in a good position. So, as you will see in a few moments, we have reversed most of those revenue cuts that we put on last year, not knowing what the future held for, for us with, with the pandemic. But again, we are looking at pre-pandemic level budgets, again, going into FY22. Things were starting, starting to turn around. We're starting to see that. And we, we are feeling very comfortable with, with the, the changes we have made going into FY22. There are no new tax increases in this budget. There is no new general fund supported debt in this budget, and there is no stimulus money budgeted to cover any operating or capital in this budget. There is ample funding for capital to continue with the planned projects we have out there, and that we're determined to be of higher priority. We still are planning to maintain the 25% minimum fund balance in the general fund to protect our credit rating, and to remain flexible and sustainable, just in case revenues struggle at any point. We are proposing to provide employees with a 1.4% COLA this year, and that's based on the All Items Consumer Price Index. That's published from the December, we look at December to December, and it's also published by the State Department of Local Government as a benchmark. We have proposed to bring about, bring back merit raises this year that were cut from this current year's budget due to the revenue reductions related to COVID and the impacts of the COVID pandemic. And then in addition, you will see the elimination of the first few levels of job classifications, 108 through 110, in order to eliminate any full-time positions starting below $15 an hour, and to better compete externally in our market area. We are seeing steep competition in our public works operations, in our parks maintenance divisions, competing with the private sector, and competing with other organizations locally for skilled labor and skilled jobs. You also notice the proposed addition of a downtown development coordinator position, and this is in effort to better promote and market our downtown, improve coordination of various revenue, various venues and events, assist with connecting sellers and buyers for property redevelopment downtown, and hopefully to oversee an arts and entertainment district in our beautiful and historic downtown. It deserves to be a destination to anyone living in or visiting Bowling Green. We need to get more people downtown in our beautiful downtown area. We feel like this position is needed, and we'll, we'll do, provide good return on, on our investment. CERS, CERS employer contributions increased another 12% this year over, over the current year, and, but that's all accounted for in the budgets, all, all covered. But if you can imagine, if your mortgage or your rent went up 12% every, every year, that's basically what we've been facing every year since. that's basically what we've been facing every year since FY18, 17. But it's, it's been like five or six years and we don't know when it's supposed to end, but it's, it's a 12% increase in our retirement costs. It's, it's a very big rock to, to cover. So, we have managed to cover that again. But we, we've had to deal that, deal with that for several years now and I'm hoping with the new board they put together for CERS, that will hopefully improve soon in the future. In closing, we are the third largest city in Kentucky, one of the fastest growing communities in Kentucky, but that has its benefits and its challenges. We are the only city in Kentucky with three accredited departments along with an accredited 911 call center and many award-winning departments and divisions. So, we would ask for your trust in our expertise that we have in all of our departments and in all levels of our organization. We are a service organization that strives to deliver the highest quality service at the lowest possible price. We do that through good stewardship of tax dollars, the use of technology, efficient and effective equipment, smart choices and a continued pledge to live within our means. We always look at our, our revenue stream before we, we do our budget for expenditures. So, that's what this budget before you represents. So, I want to turn it over to Sean Weeks, our Assistant CFO. He's going to cover revenues. Katie will then follow up with operating expenditures and agency, agency funding. I believe Erin Holsey will follow her with our personnel recommendations and Erin Ballou will follow Erin Holsey to cover capital projects and fund balance presentations. Again, just reminder, there's no vote tonight on this. You have roughly two weeks to look this over, digest it, sleep on it, put it on your pillow, however you want to do it. Ask us questions, email Katie with questions, email me with questions. Any of the budget team, we're, we're available. And with your blessings, we plan to put this on for first reading on June 1st with a follow-up second reading on June 15th. So, I'd like to ask Sean Weeks to come up and present revenues. Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners. Bear with me, this is going to be a little dry. I'm going to throw a lot of numbers at you guys. But if you guys want to stop me anytime, ask me questions. If I can't answer them tonight, I'll do my, we'll do our best to get them answered to you before you guys have your vote. So, I'm going to present the revenue budget for you guys, which is, which assists with the setting of the expenditure budget. Last year, extra attention was focused on gathering as much information as possible to take the best approach projecting revenues taken into account COVID-19. The trend continued for FY22 budget due to the reopening of local businesses using specific analysis with each of the top three revenue categories to curate the best approach. It provides a margin of error by selecting a conservative method for multiple scenarios to account for the possible reemergence of COVID-19 capacity limitations while allowing for a restatement of budget cuts from a recovering economy. Portions of the revenue budget are based on nine months of actual revenue compared to a proportional cumulative budget through nine months, illustrating a growth of 20.4% specifically for withholdings, fueling growth in this revenue budget to be discussed in a few slides. In most categories, the presented FY22 revenue budget is the estimate of where the city's going to finish out the year plus any possible sustainable growth in a few areas such as property taxes. So, we're going to focus on the revenue side of this table. Revenue for all funds is projected approximately $122.3 million, which is a 10.9% increase compared to the FY21 adopted budget of 110.3 million. General fund revenues, including golf and aquatics, come in at 75.6 million or a 13% increase versus the FY21 adopted budget. Some background on the effects of a recovering economy from COVID-19 on all funds revenue. Occupational fees are recommended to have a 7.1 or a 15% increase from the FY21 adopted budget. Parks and Recreation are expected to have a $47,000 or 2.4% increase. Transfers in are anticipating $5 million or 42.3% growth versus the FY21 adopted budget, which relates to capital project funding, debt service and tax district revenue distributions. All of this is to say, we project FY21 general fund revenue to finish around $74.4 million this year, which translates to a 1.7% gain budgeted in FY22 for comparison. The budget has been set based on a recovering economy as local businesses emerge from the effects of COVID-19. I do want to note on this page as well, if I go back one, that the, that the negative shown on this page is not deficit spending, but use of earmarks for capital projects both now and in the future. So, this is kind of a comparison of all funds by revenue type. I'm not going to go through all the numbers, but just to give you a little bit of quick breakdown of what that represents. Taxes include property taxes, insurance premium taxes for both the general fund and for our improvement fund, occupational fees represented by the general fund, Parks Improvement Fund, which is the Heartland Plan and Community Development, formerly known as the Heartland Taxing District, and the Job Development Ascended Fund, license and permits for the building, planner view and electrical permits. Intergovernmental can be granted across multiple funds like transit, housing choice voucher program, CDBG, liquid fuel and others. The majority of fees are represented by the WKU reimbursement for Diddle Arena bonds. Never, we have never been out on any funds since we are reimbursed for those costs by WKU. On the charges for services side, fleet lease rates, the fleet division charges each division for maintenance, cemetery receipts, health insurance premiums. On the parks and rec side, it includes general golf, general parks, excuse me, golf and aquatics. Miscellaneous can be interest, police and fire pension earnings, contribution donations and rental income. So, the two pie charts before you are showing revenue classification and their proportions in each. So, on the all funds side, well, I'd like to note that the revenue drivers are occupational fees at 44.4% of the total. Taxes are at 18.3% and transferring revenue is at 13.8%. On the general fund side, withholding the net profits, which makes up occupational fees are 68.1%. Property insurance premium taxes are 24.9. Also, occupational fees had been or at or above 70% from FY11 through 2018. FY16 through FY20 shows steady growth with FY20 actual revenue collections being the high watermark at $79.4 million, 4.9 million of which came from the care's reimbursement last year. The FY21 adopted budget reflected the adjustment of projected collections at $66.9 million due to COVID-19. The recommended FY22 figure of 75.6 million mirrors a reopening of the economy. Taking a look at the general fund revenue history, started in 2013, continued growth from the recession of 2011 showed through FY20, with the exception of FY18, which had flat or no growth. Estimated decline for the FY21 at negative 66.3% with an average increase over all the years shown here of 4.1% for total revenue through FY21. FY22 is budgeted at a plus 1.6% increase when comparing the COVID-19 affected year estimated figures with a reemerging economy in FY22. For the smaller gray bars, occupational receipts, a 3.2% average increase across all years for actual revenues through FY21, with FY21 projected to be a small 2.9% decline versus the previous year completed. The budget for total property taxes reflects a growth of 6.4% over the FY21 adopted budget and 4.8% over FY21 estimated actual collections. This growth is based on changes in assessments for real property from the first recap provided by the Warren County PVA, which is subject to change and state approval. We do get a second recap. So, that represents growth in annexed areas and new development added to the tax roll. Over the last five years, real property has grown an average of 6.1% with the high being 7.4% in FY19 and the low being 4.6% growth in FY17. Other taxes increased by 3.7% over FY21 adopted budget. So, we're specifically looking at employee withholdings here. The growth from FY13 at $32.3 million to estimated actual collections for FY21 at $42 million, total an average of 3.4% for a year-over-year gain for the 10-year period shown. The high watermark of $43.3 million was the result of a growing economy for Bowling Green businesses during FY20 with small impacts to the last few months as COVID-19 started to emerge. The low watermark of $32.3 million was the earliest year shown, which is good indication of continued positive growth that Bowling Green has enjoyed. The recommended FY22 budget of $43.6 million is $300,000 or 0.7% more than the completed FY20 year actuals to reinstate those budget cuts from FY21 and getting back to pre-COVID-19 levels. Switching gears to net profits. Growth from FY13 at $7 million to an estimated actual collection for FY21 at $8.2 million. The total is 3.6% average year-over-year increase during the 10-year period. The high watermark of $10.9 million was the result of large net profits for Bowling Green businesses from 2016, which was reported in FY2017. The low watermark of $7 million, again, is the earliest year shown on this graph and again, is a good indication of our continued growth in Bowling Green that we've come to enjoy. The recommended FY22 budget of $8 million is similar to FY16 and FY19 actual collections. The largest source of general fund revenues are occupational fees, which consist again of net profits and employee withholdings. The total occupational fee recommended budget reflects a 16.6% increase versus the FY21 adopted budget and a 2.7% increase versus projected FY21 estimates overall. Due to COVID-19, the due date for net profits was moved from April 15th to May 17th, which was yesterday, which disrupted the timing of collections and added to the difficulty of gauging the final projections. Historically, odd years have been greater revenue than even years. However, there's typically, when you're comparing odd years to odd years and even years to even years, there is also a continual growth there as well. FY22 is another even year, but many of the ripple effects on the profits of businesses from calendar year 2021, which reported FY22, will still be felt. Thus, the budget for net profits will conservatively be kept at no growth or change. This results in a 2.8% reduction versus the FY21 estimated actuals that we're projecting this current year to finish at. Limited information was available when budgeting the FY21 adopted budget for withholdings for multiple, so for withholdings, only a two-week shutdown. Sorry, let me try that again. Limited information was available when budgeting the FY21 adopted budget for withholdings with only two weeks worth of shutdown to help support those projections, consisting of multiple scenarios. Similar to last year, multiple scenarios were reviewed and a conservative method was selected. As of March 31st, actual collection, collections have outperformed a proportional budget by 20.4%. Meaning, we've collected more revenue than we expected originally when we were trying to project the downturn. Through discussion and analysis, a two-step process was taken to reinstate the budget cuts set in FY21, taking into account the previously mentioned 2.4% cumulative, 20.4% cumulative growth and additionally factoring in a historical five-year growth rate for each withholding category. This was combined to produce the FY22 budget as the community reopens and recovers from FY, from COVID-19. Also, I just looked at the figures and so, going back for the, at the end of March, we were at 20.4, we're actually at 21.4 through April. So, we're still on that trend. The numbers are still holding. So, license and permits FY21 estimated actuals are projected to finish at 13.2% ahead of the FY21 adopted budget due to higher-than-expected building and plan review permits being issued with several large projects, projects this spring. FY22 is a small 2.4% decline over FY21 adopted budget, but a 13.8% decline versus the FY21 estimated actual collections. This takes into account those large projects assisting FY21 collections and their completion, so as not to over-budget in FY22. The spiking grants for the FY21 estimated actual collections relates to the second round of payments from the coronavirus relief fund, which was $1.6 million. Remaining year two and partial year three of the SAFER grant, which goes towards 75% reimbursement for nine firefighter personnel, the Brownfields Assessment Grant funding and a UK Wellness Grant. The 2.7% decrease for recommended FY22 charges for services revenue versus the FY22 adopted figure relates primarily to the reduction of Housing Choice Voucher Program inspection fees, which will now be done within the program itself and not charged back and forth between multiple funds. Also contributing to the total are projected cemetery collection reductions as well. The recommended gain of 2.4% to Parks and Recreation is from golf, particularly for another year of hops and golf course and driving range, as well as projected Russell Sims Aquatic Center receipts. For miscellaneous revenue, the 8.9% increase versus the FY21 adopted budget and 7.3% recommended gain compared to the FY21 actuals directly relates to projected increases in sale of equipment as a secondary market for certain items remains robust and a new procurement card rebate program that's, that we enrolled in with our banking partner. So, to recap, we are proposing a 13% increase for the FY22 recommended general fund revenue budget versus FY21 adopted or a 1.7% increase versus the estimated actuals where we think we're going to finish, which is the direct result of reopening of local businesses and a recovering economy as restrictions and capacity limits continue to be lifted. The last two years have been very unusual from revenue projection standpoint, perspective and we've had to adapt and utilize more tools and take deeper dives into the numbers, which has actually made this process stronger for future analysis and review and that we're doing each and every month as we, as we look at these to make sure that we're, we're not getting ahead of ourselves. I know I threw a lot at you guys. Is there any questions you guys may have or that I can follow up with in a, in a future?
I just wanted to reiterate what you said about the care you all took to make sure that your assumptions you were making were based on whatever facts and data you could. And I remember back when you were trying to do this during the pandemic and you sat each of us down and just walked us through, here's the data, here's what we are looking at and trying to make sure that we are being, making a conservative estimate about what we think is going to happen and the care that you all take, the responsibility you take to make sure that you are being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. I think it's a great privilege of mine to get to see how much you all do this work and detailed work and to know that as hard as the pandemic was, that you all rose to the occasion and to hear that, all that deep analysis that you guys showed us, which was just truly amazing, that you're continuing to be able to use that to make our estimations more accurate is really amazing. So, thank you all.
Very valuable process for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks.
Thank you so much. I'm going to turn it over to Katie Schaller Ward for, to speak on expenditures.
Thank you, Sean. Good afternoon, or should I say good evening? We're going to turn our attention to the expenditure side of the budget and if I change the slide, that'll help. Here we go. So, when we're looking at the expenditure budget, very similar to the revenue budget, they're going to basically coincide. We are looking at fiscal year 22 to be more than the FY21 adopted budget as we've previously been saying for the all funds and the general fund, which falls in lines, falls in line with the revenue projections. So, Sean and I are going to sound very similar because we budget for the general fund how we budget expenses and how we budget revenue. So, hopefully I will share a little bit additional information in this process, but, but it is a very similar process. And as Sean mentioned previously, you see a net decrease in our adjusted budget and this is the adjusted budget, not the estimated budget that Sean is referring to. But currently, how our budget stands right now, we are expecting to use about $4.4 million of already set aside funds for specific purposes. So, we are not tapping into fund balance specifically other than what you have already approved us to do through budget amendments. So, the all funds, we propose to increase the expenses by just under 8.5 million or 7.4% and use $370,000 of previously saved money to balance the all funds expenditure budget. And these are generally for capital projects and purchases. For the eighth consecutive year, we do not propose to use any fund balance in the general fund. Just like revenues, expenses will be approximately $8.7 million or 13% more for the FY21. Just like revenues, expenses will be approximately $8.7 million or 13% more for the FY22 budget compared to FY21. The FY21 adjusted expenditure budget includes carryovers and capital projects and open purchase orders from the previous year. So we don't actually expect to finish this year on the expense side above 74 million. We will, will finish well below 74 million. So as just stated, when comparing the FY22 all funds recommended budget to the FY21 adopted budget, total expenses are increasing. By looking more closely at different expenditure categories, this approximate $8.5 million change is reflected in most category types and this again is all funds. Personnel involves an adjustment of almost $3 million and we'll have that discussion a little bit more in detail by Erin Holsey. The net decrease in contractual services is related to not budgeting for the FY22 Transit Grant, which we have to apply for separately, it's federal money. What we found is that we're sort of ahead of the curve when we budget for it until we actually receive it. So we've decided not to budget for it this year, but wait until it comes in and then we'll amend the budget at that point in time. That's about $1.15 million. We've also anticipated some reductions in the medical and prescription claims, about $445,000. That's largely in place because of our changes again in the, the medical plans and Erin will talk about that in a few minutes. And a significant decline in construction costs. Last year, we budgeted over $3 million for the Shive Lane Project Extension, which was all construction. And of course, we don't have that much in construction specifically this year and that's a contractual type product. The approximate $340,000 increase in supplies directly relates to the capital projects and unfortunately, I don't know if it's because of COVID or just the reality of times, we have an increased cost in ammunition and other public safety supplies. The $670,000 increase in subsidies is primarily from additional mainstream and housing choice voucher federal funding, so it is not specifically general fund. And then the almost $1.4 million increase in property and fixed assets is directly related to capital purchases recommended for fiscal year 22, again, which will be discussed in more detail a little bit later. The nearly $429,000 increase in debt service is from the recent TransPark expansion bonds, which we just issued in March. And again, we'll discuss a little bit more of the debt process or the debt funding in a few minutes. Of the over $5.1 million increase in transfers out, the majority of it comes from more general fund transfers for capital projects, which is approximately 5.9 million, but also an increase in general fund support for our property and casualty fund. This is a separate fund where we pay our insurance premiums for law enforcement liability, auto liability, all that kind of stuff. The general fund generally supports that program. It used to be in the general fund, we moved it to a separate fund so that someday we could become self-funded, but that's a long time from now. Excluding capital items, the all fund operating budget is up 10% or $10 million compared to the FY21 operating budget, which was just at over 100.3 million. As shown on the pie charts, public safety expenditures make up 31.2% of the all funds budget and 44.2% of the general fund budget. Again, public safety is our number one priority and therefore that's where the budget generally goes. In the all funds budget, the other departments combined account for 43.5% with a balance of 25.3% from transfers out, debt service, intergovernmental, agency services and contingency. For the general fund, other departments combined represent 35.6% and then the transfers out, intergovernmental, agency, services and contingency make up the remaining 20.2%. Again, very similar to the revenue side, we're looking specifically at the general fund expenditure side and the numbers match exactly. But we're up about $8.7 million or the 13% when you're comparing our FY22 recommended budget to the FY21 very conservative adopted budget. This graph reflects total adopted budget amounts for the past few years. So these are not actual expenses, but the adopted budget compared to adopted budgets. You're seeing an apples-to-apples comparison. The rise from FY16 through FY20 is mostly reflective of the city's capital improvement program with our highest budget mark in fiscal year 19 at 74.1 million. As the expenditure budget is prepared and as the department heads will probably shake their heads and say yes and join me in this, we take very special care as we look through the budget line by line and looking as Jeff had mentioned, some departments feel great about stuff and some departments not so happy about certain things. But we take into consideration historical trends, actual needs and other factors determine the most appropriate costs as we budget. So we reduce budgets and extract savings whenever we can. Last year, due to the anticipated impacts of COVID-19, we had to even take that a step further. And we had to reduce several non-essential budgetary reduction or make several non-essential budgetary reductions provided by each department to help balance the budget. FY22 restores most of those cuts and we're basically taking ourselves back to pre-pandemic levels as the city manager mentioned. When you take into account the projected revenues as previously presented, the FY22 recommended general fund expenditure budget covers all operating costs and proposes to include capital improvement program without impacting fund balance. Since the general fund accounts for 61.6% of the all funds budget, I'm going to review in a little bit more detail some of the general fund expenditure categories here in the next few slides. So again, similar to the revenue side of the budget, we're looking again at the expenditure side. So personnel in this case is our largest expense contributing to over 63.3% of the FY22 general fund budget. We, I think surpassed 60% in the last couple of years. This graph reflects how slowly personnel expenses have grown over the past several years compared to actual total expenses. So your total expenses are the blue bar and the gray bar is your personnel. However, with the addition of 41 new public safety positions in the past 10 years and as the city manager mentioned, we've had at least three years of the 12% CERS rate increase, personnel expenses have been expected to rise. Fortunately, we have had the ability to hold those personnel costs below 40 million through FY2019, even with providing a cost of living and step adjustment as well as adding a few other non-public safety positions through the years. This was accomplished through the natural attrition and by examining every job vacancy as it became available. We combine jobs, retooling positions, eliminating positions and holding non-public safety positions vacant for a period of time before filling, all of which has been done when it was feasible and appropriate to do so. As we move into the FY2020 or as we moved into FY2020 and now beyond, we have pushed past the $40 million mark and continue to grow as public safety and, as a public safety and service-oriented organization. Again, with personnel being the largest expense type in the general fund budget, this chart breaks down the various components which make up personnel expenses and reflects a 5.9% increase overall for FY22 compared to the FY21 adopted budget. Additional details about the contributing factors behind this will be presented shortly. I just want to explain other personnel costs. That includes the employers' portion of medical, dental, vision, life and health benefit insurance, so that's the city's portion toward that. Workers' comp and unemployment expenses. And we did have about $11,000 increase in unemployment expenses for this budget based on the rate that were provided from our insurer. I expect that to go up next year. I expected it to go up even more this year, but I was pleased that it was only about $11,000 impact. And then the total other benefits is primarily tuition reimbursement. We provide a cell phone stipend to employees and we have a recertification reimbursement for EMT, so the fire department individuals are reimbursed for the, the cost to have their recertification done. The majority of non-personal expenditures are up primarily due to capital improvement purchases and projects. Contractuals are more specifically up from anticipating an increase in the PVA fee, the property value administrator fee that we are required to pay by statute. There was a change, I believe in 2019 to the legislation that says, once your community exceeds a $6 billion assessment in property values, then our fee to the PVA goes to $100,000. Currently, we're at $60,000. I am not certain, but feel pretty confident that we're probably going to be darn near $6 billion in property assessment going into the property tax season this fall. So we went ahead and anticipated that increase of $40,000. We've also had a $97,000 cost in software maintenance, that's an increase. We're bringing back travel and special education into the budget, that's about $88,000 more and that's as employees can return to normal activities as COVID again continues to be behind us. If we can take advantage of virtual training, I believe we will continue to do that, but this also provides for the opportunity for actual travel as needed. Investment charges for street lighting has gone up about $30,000 and increasing the general fund contribution to the neighborhood improvement program by about $200,000 this year. And that's all netted against decreases in our fleet lease rates, which was about $160,000, utilities at about $71,000 and other changes to CIP categories from FY21 to FY22. Supplies increased because, as previously mentioned, the public safety and ammunition supply costs have gone up about $25,000. There are more smaller asset purchases under $5,000 such as upfitting for some new positions that are recommended and investing in technology enhancements. That's about $125,000. And then bringing back concessions, concession items, particularly for the aquatics facility, which we did not budget for last year, knowing the pool would be closed. So the reduction in subsidies is related to an anticipated decrease in the downtown TIF distribution as it will represent the 2020 activities. And then there are simply more capital purchases proposed in FY22, which significantly increases our fixed assets. Miscellaneous is generally, I'm sorry, miscellaneous is primarily general fund contingency and we like to have at least about a 1% contingency budget to cover any unforeseen expenses that come up each year. So we have increased this going into the upcoming year. As previously mentioned, the majority of the increases in transfers out is a direct result of more general fund support toward capital projects and purchases at about 5.1 million, as well as an increase in support to the property casualty fund, which was about $450,000. And that's netted against a decrease in general fund support for debt service of about $280,000. So we're going to turn our attention now to our agency funding and based on an adopted eligible agency funding procedure, a copy of which was provided in your agency funding binders, included in subsidies and assistance expenditure category are the city's 10 eligible agencies which provide services on behalf of the city. The recommendation regarding funding for these agencies in the coming year is to generally keep most agencies at the same level as they were in FY21 adopted budget, place a 3% cap on three agencies seeking more money, restoring the economic development authority to its traditional funding level and reducing Operation Pride since it no longer contracts for the Louisville Road right-of-way mowing. Additionally, there are a few other items which go along with agency funding. For the past several years, the city has traditionally provided a dollar-for-dollar match of the employee pledges, which, where they do not receive any additional benefit for those pledges. It's about a $326 production from last year. Once again, we propose to provide a $10,000 amount of money for expansion or upgrading of the outdoor warning system for the city limits and that's generally done through emergency management, Warren County Emergency Management. And the city is also required to provide 2.5% of a local match for any federal aviation administration grants received by the regional airport. And this year, the improvement project that the airport has requested funding for is for reconstruction of the terminal apron. Last year, we had the design costs associated with that in our budget. This year, it's now the construction costs, so approximately $53,000 is put in the budget to cover that 2.5%. With the addition, with these additions to the recommended amount on the previous slide, agency funding represents 1.5% of the general fund expenditures. Not in general fund, but as part of the all funds budget, up to $150,000 has been set aside for the city's contribution toward the beautification or the beautify I-65 project maintenance. Excluding capital expenditures, the FY22 general fund operating budget reflects an increase of 5.2% or $3.4 million compared to the FY21 65.6 million. However, if we bypass FY21, because it was just a year we want to all forget about, and we look back to the fiscal year 22, or I'm sorry, the fiscal year 2020 budget, FY22 budget only reflects a 3.4% increase in operating costs. Again, this is primarily from restoring last year's cuts and proposing additional changes for FY22, some of which right now will be explained by our human resources director, Erin Holsey.
You getting bored, Brian?
Yes.
Just called him out. All right. Okay, so I want to start off by saying how incredibly proud I am to be a part of the City of Bowling Green organization. A lot of organizations say that they value their employees more than anything, but there's nothing quite like the year we just had to show that they really mean it. I want to thank all the members of our board for your steadfast support of our city employees and their families. Thank you for supporting us to enact policy that would ensure our employees did not lose income and benefits that their employees relied on during the pandemic. Thank you for protecting our jobs, our health and our safety. Thank you to the residents of Bowling Green for continuing to show support for all the city employees. Our city employees never stop working to serve our community. Despite the challenges shared by all, such as childcare and concerns over health, snow, ice and rain, the employees at the City of Bowling Green found a new way to work hard from home, from vehicles, from disinfecting parks to maintaining public safety, no one failed to uphold their service to the city. The men and women of the City of Bowling Green are one heck of an impressive group and I'm very proud to be part of them. So now down to business. Coming off a very fiscally conservative year, it may sound like we are making a lot of personnel changes. For FY21, we had less than $1 million in new personnel costs across all funds. We were able to do this because of the freeze on CERS contribution rates, no new changes to the healthcare fund and in addition, we did freeze the step and merit program, made very few changes to our pay classification schedule. For FY22, we are remaining conservative in our approach to the COLA while providing a merit step increase. We're adding many new needed positions and updating our full-time general classification pay schedule that supports our strategy of being an employer of choice in South Central Kentucky. Finally, our obligation to the state retirement has recommenced and we anticipate over a million dollar increase due to that 12% increase this year. For years, the city has managed to keep the gap between For years, the city has managed to keep the gap between the city's largest source of revenue, occupational withholding fees, and the city's largest expense, personnel services. And while the gap is shrinking in comparison to previous years, the growth in withholdings should continue to support the cost of the personnel expenses. As previously mentioned a couple of times, the Department of Local Government uses the Consumer Price Index to evaluate cost of living adjustments. The 12-month rolling CPI at the end of December 2020 was at 1.4%. Therefore, as we have historically done, we are recommending all full-time employees to receive a cost of living adjustment of 1.4%. This includes the city manager and elected officials. Each full-time pay schedule, starting wage are also being recommended for a 1.4 increase. This includes the general schedule, the department head schedule, and the schedules for police and fire. Due to a lower than normal COLA, and after a year of freezing the merit increase program, we are recommending to reinstate the step program. For FY22, this ranges in from from positions to 1.25% to 1.68%. In addition, on the part-time side, our strategy is the same and consistent as that with the full-time side. We're recommending a 15 cent increase to the pay for current part-time employees to cover the cost of living expenditures. This represents an average of 1.4% between all part-time and seasonal employees. The part-time schedule will also receive a 15 cent increase, and eligible part-time and seasonal employees will receive a step increase. The approximate cost of the COLA for all employees is $540,000 across all funds and an additional $474,000 for the step increase across all funds. Okay, so now, $540,000, just a little over half a million. So now for the, you're fine, you're fine. Now for the fun. So there are 80 position changes being recommended. That's affecting 80 personnel, not 80 positions. So for the FY22 calendar, for a cost of $225,000. These positions are all laid out in Appendix D of your binder. The majority of these positions are in Public Works, Operations, Parks Maintenance, and Landscape. These divisions are an essential backbone to achieving the city's vision, goals, and priorities. They contribute to ensuring residents have access to recreational and leisure activities, live in safe neighborhoods, have safe roads, walkable sidewalks, and greenways. They clean up leaves, branches, snow, and ice. They keep our parks green and clean. The employees working in these positions are full-time and looking for a career with the city. They support families, and they're a part of our community. However, they've traditionally been on the lower end of the pay scale. And this year, we felt it was time to ensure that all Bowling Green employees make at least $15 an hour or more. Instead of increasing the entire wage scale, we are recommending to eliminate grades 108, 109, and 110. We are recommending to eliminate the positions custodian and laborer 2. Custodians will become parks, facilities, maintainers, which better fits the job that they perform and increases the flexibility that they have to cross-train throughout the division. Instead of hiring new personnel into operations as laborer 2s, we will hire them in as OMT 1s with the same expectations that they need to get their CDL within their first 12 months of employment. In order to create a minimum of $15 an hour, all the positions in grade 110 had to be upgraded to grade 111. This creates a domino effect, as most of these positions are part of a career path in which positions are two grades apart. Therefore, changes were made to all positions within the career path by reclassification of one grade through the level of crew leader, which moves from 115 to 116. The next largest group of employees to receive a reclassification are the communications dispatchers. We are recommending a reclassification from 116 to 117 for a cost to the city of $56,000. This upgrade is to keep the starting wage of dispatchers closer to that of the starting wage of a new police officer or firefighter. It was getting to be about the starting wage was around 3,000 difference, and this gets us into less than $1,000. Another major additional adjustment is in the Housing Division of Neighborhood and Community Services. In the last four years, the city has been allocated 84 additional housing vouchers, an increase of 14% for a total of 695. With the funds for housing, HUD also allocates the city money for the city to administer the program. It is with these funds that we recommend an upgrade to the housing support specialists and recertification specialists. Other reclassifications can be found in Appendix D. I'm available tonight or anytime over the next couple of weeks to discuss any questions you have to those. I am proud to be a part of a city and a budget team that not only says we value our employees, but demonstrates this through intentional progressive change to our pay classification system to support a higher quality of life for our current employees and a better candidate pool for our future employees. This slide will list the new positions that we are recommending. There are seven new full-time positions and one new part-time position that's being recommended with the FY22 budget. Five of those seven positions are in the police department. This will add a captain to B-shift patrol, a detective in the criminal investigations division, and three patrol officers. Adding these new patrol officers, or I'm sorry, in FY20, we began following a staffing plan, a six-year staffing plan. And in FY20, we added five new police officers. In FY21, we applied for a grant, and we did not get the funds for that. And due to the unknown certainty of the pandemic, we froze the staffing plan last year. So this will be picking up kind of year two of that six-year staffing plan. Each year, the city will determine the needs and the fiscal feasibility of continuing to follow that staffing plan. The two other positions in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department, one will be in the Housing Division to support the increase in vouchers that I previously spoke about. This person will be responsible for inspections, which are currently being done by code enforcement. This will give the Housing Division more control over their program and the Code Enforcement Division more time to focus on their vision. The other new position in NCS is the creation of a new position for a downtown development coordinator, which Mr. Mizel previously mentioned. This person will be responsible for providing marketing and event coordination to be a liaison to connect property owners to potential clients and oversee the proposed arts and entertainment district. It will be a necessary resource to support the revitalization of the downtown business district. These new positions will bring the full-time complement to 495 employees. In the last 10 years, the city's workforce has grown by 10%, while the city's population has grown closer to 20%. The city has been very careful when adding staff. In the last 10 years, we've added 81 new positions. Forty-five of those have been in either police dispatch or the fire department. Onto the retirement system. It's like the doom and gloom of every presentation, right? Quick reminder on a couple of recent bills that have aided cities and counties of the Commonwealth in their quest to get some relief from the exponential increase to the retirement system. House Bill 249 paused, hit the pause button on the 12% increase scheduled to go in effect for the FY21 due to COVID, the COVID pandemic. This saved our city $1.1 million in the current fiscal year, but the pause button is off, and those increases will go into effect for FY22. Last spring, the House Bill passed 484 passed. And while cities and counties were hoping for a full separation of CERS from KRS, this does give CERS an independent board of trustees to manage and minister and make future decisions for CERS. This board began administration last month. KRS is now KPPA, the Kentucky Public Pension Authority, and will continue to oversee the administration and operation for CERS. This graph shows that in just eight years, the cost of the retirement system will more than double. Just to talk a little bit about the employees' medical benefits plan, the city is almost halfway through our second year having a reference-based plan. Just for a little bit of information, that is using a benchmark of Medicare to pay providers for medical bills. 65% of the employees are on this plan, and the city has saved over $300,000 since the inception of the plan. In addition, the city's new prescription benefit manager and closed formulary is saving the city approximately $236,000 a year in rebates. However, the cost of prescriptions, especially specialty medications, is almost outpacing the savings. For this reason, the city is making no changes to premiums for the city or the employees. The City Care Center lost our part-time Friday doctor at the end of 2020. Due to the decreased utilization, we decided to wait on hiring a new doctor. Dr. Davidson continues to work in the clinic Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. And Melissa Baker, our nurse, continues to hold nurse-only hours on Fridays from 8 to noon. We will continue to monitor the utilization of the clinic, and we are prepared to hire another doctor in the future when needed. At the next meeting, I will be requesting approval for renewal to our stop-loss coverage. The increase this year proposed was 10%, but we will be removing aggregate coverage that was recommended during FY21 for a total increase of $28,000. More on this in the next meeting, but I'll be available to answer any questions you might have about this in the next couple of weeks. This graph shows the breakdown of personnel expenditures by department of all funds on the left and the general fund on the right. In summary, the budget of the general fund for personnel services is $47.9 million or 63% of the entire general budget. I would now like to introduce Assistant Chief Financial Officer Erin Baloo to go over capital improvement program.
Good afternoon. Don't worry, I am your final speaker, and I will start with capital improvement plan. The city's capital improvement program, or CIP, is the annual plan of project expenditures for public facilities and infrastructure. It shows estimated costs and sources of funding for all city projects costing over $25,000 and with an estimated useful life of at least five years. In FY2022, the CIP budget totals over $21.4 million. This includes $10.1 million for debt service payments and $5.8 million of general fund support. The total CIP budget is only $800,000 more than last year, but the general fund contribution has increased by $4.6 million. This increase reflects a return to a more normal budget year, as you can see on the chart, with $4.8 million contributed by the general fund in 2020 and even more than that in the years prior to that, from 2017 through 19. The remaining non-debt CIP is being provided by general fund underspending that was captured in prior years and then transferred and then transferred to capital project funds or is being provided by the city's enterprise or internal service funds. It's also important to point out that the CIP program is still outpacing the low point in FY10 by 39% or $6 million, even in this lower CIP year compared to the higher years from FY17 through 20. The CIP budget excluding debt is $11.2 million for FY22 and is categorized back to four overarching strategic plan goals. Those include municipal facilities and equipment, community livability, traffic in roads or improved traffic flow, and technology improvements. The largest slices of the CIP spending are dedicated to community livability and traffic in roads at 41.9% and 27.7% respectively. The recommended capital improvement program projects are listed on the next several slides. I review most of these projects, but information on all the projects is available in your budget books in Appendix E. Community livability is a strategic plan goal that seeks to enhance the quality of life in the local community through strong neighborhoods, walkable spaces, and recreational offerings. The FY22 Capital Improvement Plan budget allocates $4.7 million to this goal. Of that, $600,000 is being dedicated to sidewalks. The sidewalk improvement program is being reinstated with FY22 back to a $500,000 budget after being paused last year due to COVID-19. This program was initiated in 2018 to foster a walkable community by providing sidewalks in areas where none had existed beforehand. Since then, over 17 miles of new sidewalk has been constructed through this program. Also for sidewalks is $100,000, which is again being budgeted for sidewalk reconstruction. The primary focus of this program in FY22 will be to replace existing sidewalks to eliminate trip hazards and to improve ADA compliance. New in FY21 was the greenways expansion and construction program. A total of $275,000 was allocated to this program in its first year, and the budget, and this budget provides an additional $400,000. This program works to prioritize and close critical gaps in the city's multi-use path or greenways network. And finally, on this slide, the storm water mitigation program has a budget of $500,000 for FY22. This is an increase of $250,000 compared to last year's temporarily reduced budget. This program was created in response to the 2010 flooding and addresses a prioritized list of backlog stormwater projects. Since its inception, over $5.6 million has been allocated to this program, and 20 projects have been completed. A thriving downtown has been a strategic plan goal on its own for many years, and the current downtown improvement project supports this goal through streetscape improvements. Phase two of this project is currently underway and is focused on the downtown core area. The FY2022 budget will pre-fund a million dollars for phase three, which will extend these streetscape improvements from downtown to the riverfront or up to WKU. Work on this phase of the project is expected to begin in FY2023. The Cola Street Pedestrian Bridge is over 100 years old and has been a part of the city's greenway network as a pedestrian bridge since the 1990s. A budget of $40,000 is being provided in FY22 for comprehensive inspection, data collection, and design to determine any repair needs and costs for the bridge. Parks and Recreation Community Livability projects are highlighted by the Riverfront Park Development Project, which has been a strategic plan goal also for many years. This project is slated to provide a wide range of improvements, including a pedestrian bridge and pass, restrooms, fishing platforms, and a disc golf course. Funding for the project began in FY2021 with $1.5 million contributed by the city, which will be supplemented by additional $750,000 through federal grant funds. The FY2222 funding will provide an additional $1 million in city contributions to pre-fund the second phase of this project. Roland Land Park is set to receive $115,000 in this budget to repurpose an existing tennis court for pickleball courts. The new space will provide up to three pickleball courts and will also allow for playground additions in the remaining space. As mentioned before, the other two parks projects listed on the page are found in more detail in your budget book. The BG Reinvestment Area Neighborhood Improvement Program completes the community livability goal with an FY22 budget of just under $945,000. This is comprised of $400,000 in general fund funding and almost $545,000 from CDBG federal grant funds. This program was approved as part of the city's five-year consolidated plan in 2014. The first targeted area for neighborhood improvements through this program was in the Chestnut Bypass Fairview 14th Street area. The second area focused on Old Morgantown Road to Morgantown Road. We're in the third targeted area now, which will encompass Census Block 102.1 from the west side of the bypass to Kentucky Street and from 8th Avenue North to Riverview Drive. This will be funded over two years during FY22 and FY23. This project is still in the beginning, in the planning phase, but will be comprised or plan to be comprised of 70% of funding for housing improvements, 20% for pedestrian improvements, and 10% for neighborhood identity enhancements. Okay, the next strategic plan goal addressed with the capital improvement program is improved traffic flow with a recommended budget of $3. traffic flow with a recommended budget of $3.1 million in FY '22. $1.5 million of that total is dedicated to street resurfacing or overlay program. Half a million dollars of that will be funded by the general fund and the remaining $1 million is coming from state tax revenues. This program was reinvigorated in FY 2006 and has since that time covered, resurfaced over 187 miles of roadway, and funding has topped over $21 million through this program. Current capacity for this coming year allows for about 18 miles of roadway to be resurfaced. A new project for FY '22 is for Ashley Circle widening and intersection improvements with an initial budget of $750,000. This will be the first year of a multi-year project and will provide for costs associated with design, property acquisition, and utility relocation costs. Intersection spot improvements in FY '22 will include new turn lanes, widening of lanes, and sidewalks for up to six intersections for a total budget of $250,000. And finally, on this slide, the Highland Way realignment to Emmett Avenue Intersection project is also budgeted in FY '22 at $100,000. The city committed to fund this project through Municipal Order 2020-191. Any project funds that exceed $100,000 will be the responsibility of the property owner and developer. The other traffic and road projects funded in the FY '22 CIP budget are listed here. The most notable or the largest of these is $250,000 for the completion of the final year of funding to resurface the roads at the Fairview Cemetery. This will resurface, I believe, Cemetery One and the Mount Mariah area. The next strategic plan goal addressed with the Capital Improvement Program is for facilities and equipment with a recommended budget of $2.5 million in FY '22. The vehicle and equipment purchases and replacements account for almost half of the budget, $1,247,000. This provides for a total of 17 new purchases and 17 replacements in the Police, Parks and Recreation, Public Works, and NCS Departments. Other facility improvements total $1,239,000 and includes $524,000 dedicated to the Fire Department. The largest portion of that budget is allocated for the architectural design for two projects, for a new fire station at the Trans Park and construction to Station 5 and a new public safety training center on that site. The Public Works Department is set to receive funding totaling $285,000 for several projects listed here. Those range from window improvements at the City Hall Annex to the installation of a second HVAC unit at the City Care Center. The Parks and Recreation is receiving a total of $430,000, with much of that to make irrigation improvements of both the Hopson and Crosswinds Golf Courses. The final strategic plan goal addressed by the FY '22 CIP is for technology improvements. This has a total budget of just over $927,000. Several IT projects were delayed in FY '21 and are now being provided for with this budget. That includes $550,000 for a switch upgrade to replace three remaining core switches and upgrade all non-core existing switches from 10G to 40G speed levels. $100,000 is being provided for access for the replacement of 60 access points on the BG Guest Wireless Network and in patrol vehicles. And there are also several other smaller replacement projects to replace copiers, employee phone handsets, and servers. And finally, the Police Department is set to receive just under $153,000 to replace 24 in-car cameras, which are nearing the end of their useful life. The remaining 26 cameras that are set to be replaced or nearing the end of that life will be replaced in the following year in FY 2023. This chart shows the CIP funding history since FY 2013. Of note, you can see the general fund contributed significantly less last year in FY 2021, but will somewhat rebound in FY 2022, back to almost $6 million as shown by the dark blue area at the bottom. The decrease last year, of course, was due to the uncertainty in regard to COVID-19. Also notice that CIP funding has increased throughout most years. You can see that through the red section, while the dead or the gray portion in the middle has steadily been decreasing. This shows that the city is being using cash to fund CIP rather than issuing debt. In review, the FY '22 Capital Improvement Program has a total budget of $21.4 million, which is $800,000 or 3.9% more than last year. The general fund fund balance is again untouched for the eighth consecutive year, and also no new general fund debt is being recommended. The debt service attributed to CIP in FY '22 totals over $10.1 million, but 36.9% of that or just over $3.7 million will be reimbursed by WKU or Warren County. The largest source of CIP funding, again, is being dedicated to community livability at almost $4.7 million, with traffic in roads receiving $3.1 million. Okay, switching gears to debt now. This slide highlights the debt funded by the general fund only. Payments made by any of the city's special revenue funds, like the Fire Improvement Fund or Job Development Incentive Fund, or payments provided by outside entities like Warren County or WKU are excluded and not shown here. The FY '21 Actual, Estimated Action Column is on target with budget at over $4.4 million, which equates to about 6% of total general fund expenditures. In FY 2022, the general fund spend for debt service is recommended to be just under $4.2 million, which is a one-year savings of $282,000. The FY '22 budget includes no new general fund debt, as we mentioned before, and no general fund debt has been issued, no new general fund debt has been issued since 2008. With the exception of the ballpark bonds, which mature in 2038, all general fund-related debt will be fully retired by 2033. The full funding picture of the city's debt service is shown here. The total FY '22 debt service from all funding sources is $10.1 million and includes the general fund, which includes 41% of the total budget or just under $4.2 million. Reimbursements from WKU and Warren County equal 36.9% or $3.00 of the debt service. And special revenue funds, which is the Fire Improvement Fund and Job Development Incentive Fund, total 22.1% or $2.2 million. This funding source actually increased by $1.2 million in FY 2022 to cover the first year of debt service on the newly issued ITA debt. This chart shows the city's outstanding debt history. Debt peaked in FY '09 at over, just over $148 million and has since decreased to $100 million that's estimated for the end of FY 2021. This is a net decrease of $48.2 million or 35.2%. Most notable on this chart, of course, is the increase in debt during FY '21. Over $43.8 million was issued in March of this year for the ITA to expand the current Kentucky Trans Park. Debt service payments will begin in FY '22, as I mentioned on the previous slide, and will be funded 100% by the city's Job Development Incentive Fund for the first five years. Thereafter, debt service costs will be split 50/50 with the county. Also, it's important to note that of the city's estimated $100 million in outstanding debt, 78.4 million or over 78% of that was issued for other entities, including WKU, Warren County, and ITA for projects like the ballpark and the trans park. Debt issued by the city for city projects totals $21.6 million or only 22% of our outstanding Now to the final slide. Switching gears to our FY '22 General Fund Fund Balance. Fund balance is defined as the remaining equity balance after all budgeted funds have been made. The FY '22 Beginning Fund Balance is estimated to be about $34.3 million and is based on staff revenue and expenditure projections through June 30th. The committed fund balance number of $18.9 million is our reserve balance equal to 25% of the recommended FY '22 general fund revenues. This is an increase of $2.2 million over the current balance, and it's due to the increased FY '22 revenue budget compared to the FY '21 revenue budget. The assigned fund balance of $3.5 million is an estimate of open purchase orders that will be moved to FY 2022 and approved carryforward projects remaining open at June 30th. This is also consistent with past years. No use of fund balance is again recommended for FY 2022. The last time the general fund fund balance was used in the budget was in FY 2014. The unassigned fund balance of $15.4 million will be available in FY 2022 for any unbudgeted major purchases, infrastructure repairs, or other significant events. And now I will turn it back over to Katie to close her presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Ballou.
Jeff mentioned all of us on the budget team, but I'd like to extend our appreciation to graphics designer Laura Harris, as Jeff, city manager, had previously mentioned. Laura created all of the budget graphics for the presentation and the budget itself, not the charts and graphs, but the actual pictures. And I would also like to recognize Erin Ballou and Jennifer Lightfoot, who is the office associate in the Finance Department, for their work with the development of this year's budget summary document. We try each and every year to make it readable and user-friendly, and we've had, each year we submit it to the GFOA for an Award of Excellence. They've changed some of their criteria, therefore we've added a few things to the budget document to hopefully have us get that award again for this budget. Do you have any questions?
I believe we're saving our rounds and copying, taking our notes, and deciphering a lot of the information, but I want to give an accolade to you, to the entire team, to Mr. Mizel, for the, a lot of work that went in this, and it's well-presented. You gave us 50 slides tonight of a 209-page report that we're all deciphering, and we thank you for that work, and we appreciate the questions that you'll take from us in the future so we can have the best budget for our city. Thank you.
It was noted, obviously, in the budget message, and Mr. Mizel pointed it out at the beginning of the presentation, you approved tonight some additional funding from the new Recovery Act that is not included in this budget. We will have a completely separate conversation about how that money will be spent, so that's above and beyond all of this. So if you want to know why it wasn't included, one, we haven't received it yet, and two, there is a whole lot of guidelines, over 151 pages worth, that are not final from the U.S. Treasury. So when we do get that information, which could be as late as July, to get a final recommendation, then we will set up an opportunity to discuss that a little bit further. But I didn't want you to think we've ignored it in any way. We just are not prepared to discuss that right now. It just has too many restrictions and factors associated with it, not to mention we have until December of 2024 to spend it, so we've got plenty of time to work on that one.
Scholar Award, we appreciate it very much. Mrs. Jackson, do we have any public comments tonight? I want to make sure we have given that opportunity before we go to the closed session. All right, we are going to take a five-minute break before we go to a closed session, and we appreciate everyone for being here tonight. Y'all have a good evening and spend some time with your families. Take care.